I'm going to call to order the Board of Aldermen work session Monday, March 24th. Roll call.
Long, absent. Polley.
Present.
Huckabee.
Present.
Jones.
Present.
Brown.
Present.
Schenkel.
Present.
All right, on to the approval of the agenda. Two items need to be removed from the agenda, the minutes from the work session February 10th and the special work session February 8th, and need to have added the minutes for work session February 24th, and then need to amend the date for spring cleanup to the 21st of April through the 26th.
What was the date?
April 21st through April 26th.
You need a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
Second.
Motion to amend the agenda by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Schenkel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on to the approval of minutes for work session February 24th, 2025.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Work session, item number one, request for project graduation to have a 5K at walking track and cow patty bingo at the Azalea Park Pavilion on April 12th, 2025.
Somebody took too many. Okay. Oh, this is definitely, yeah, all right.
The date on this correct?
So we've changed it. Your flyer that should be coming, you should check that.
Which one?
The green one.
Oh, yeah, right here.
Oh, breaks, breaks to under the cow patty bingo.
That's how that works.
Side tracked. Wear your old shoes.
Okay, so originally we were going to do this on March 15th, but when the tornado came through, we kind of changed that up a little bit. We decided not to do it that day, so that was the cow patty bingo thing. So we're going to try and combine the Shamrock Shuffle and the cow patty bingo, both for April 2nd, so that's why the date is incorrect on the cow patty bingo flyer, but that will be obviously updated once it's approved.
Second or 12th?
12th.
April 12th.
Okay.
Is when it's due. Did I say the second? Sorry. Um, so what we're looking at is starting at Azalea Park, circle the track at Azalea Park, kind of like where the food trucks set up for the Azalea Festival, head towards the floor path, go just past the Sheriff's Department, turn onto La Chats, which is kind of that alley-like way, then hit Buford, go to the rotary track parking, or walking trail, go around that, and then just kind of backtrack back to Azalea Park. Very minimal road blockages or road shutting down at that point, so we were hoping that that would be a little bit easier on the city police to help with that, even if they just put barricades out, we can kind of settle up for that point in time. Starting time would be 10:00 AM, maybe an hour-ish is what we're looking at. Hopefully it will be done. Cow patty bingo, we were hoping to set up under one of the pavilions on the Bill Whitenour side and just kind of put up orange fencing, it's just going to be a baby calf, it's not going to be a huge cow, so then it would just last an hour, and on the flyer it says that if nothing has happened by 11, it's wherever its foot is at that point in time, so that would kind of end at the same exact time as the Shamrock Shuffle event.
Chief, you're willing to work with him blocking streets that we blocked?
Absolutely. Whatever she needs.
Make the motion to approve that if there's no other question.
Second.
Motion approved by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Number two, request from Brian Koffer to host the JRO TC Annual Raider Challenge on April 11th and 12th, 2025, at the Police and Fire Training Site.
I am team captain of the Raider Team, Jayden West, and this is the assistant team captain, Brandon Guzman, and we're here to request availability at the Police and Training, Police and Fire Training Site to host our 11th annual Raider Meet, the 11th and 12th of April. We currently have 10 schools with a total of 12 teams, approximately 120 competing with the total number of people on site being 225, maybe even higher. We're going to have all participants have signed Hold Harmless Agreement on hand, and the insurance is going to be umbrellaed under the Police Department, so, as well as we're going to have a food vendor there, but if they don't have their vendor permit by the 1st of April, we're just going to say no to that, as well as first, our coffer, talk to Mr. Settle about porta potties and requesting the brush dumping be closed off for the actual day of the meet, April 12th.
Yeah.
Chief, you're good with that? Same thing we do every year, right?
Absolutely. They do a great job.
I'll move to approve their request.
Second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, on to number three, discussion and update on the Madison County Recovery Alliance, sorry, Madison County Recovery with Karen Whitenour.
Alex, we need to change it to Alliance, though.
Sorry.
We should just go with that because it clearly is a little better. We wanted to, first of all, officially invite everyone, and I'm sorry I didn't get these in your package, so please feel free to come and help. It's our community event, it's our third annual community event that we're going to have at our new office on South Main, 505 South Main. Still, it's been around for minutes, notice the Presbyterian Church was the Thrive Church last. We actually just moved over that building for our offices, just our offices, there's no recovery housing. And we're going to have, we'll have lunch, I think, at 11:30, I don't think the full agenda's on there, but we start at 10:00 AM, go to 2 o'clock, got a couple of speakers and really good food, and we'd love to have everybody come and check out the new digs and see kind of what we have set up. We went from 500 square feet up here off East Main to 5,000 square feet, so Rooston's in heaven over there having actually room, and you don't have to have earbuds and walk outside to have a phone call and that sort of thing. And wanted to give you guys just a little quick update on, I think everybody basically knows what we do at MACRA. I just want to kind of highlight a couple of things that we've done a little about our program and what's went on the last year or so. We started out in 2022, we had a total of about 30 clients, and 2023, we went up to 54, 2024, we were at 92, we're tracking to double again. We're doubling every year our reach. That, of course, is because we're adding more people. It started out with just me part-time, and as we add more people, we can take more people. So, we also got our women's house up and running, got it NARMS certified this last fall, and it's going very well, both houses are doing very well, they're, I mean, packed full, and we've got long waiting lists, there's a lot of, you know, we try to, the majority of the people that we allow in our recovery houses, we try to, we want them from Madison County, they're not 100%, but we try to serve those folks first. They kind of get a little bump up on our priority list, and even just folks from Madison County, unfortunately, as the chief probably knows better than anyone, we could have 10 more houses and they would be full. And, and as we start to see people graduate, we've actually had some graduates now, it's really exciting. So far, I don't really want to throw out our success rate, it's, it's pretty high right now, you know, we'll see what that does over a few years, but this really seems to be kind of the key, is they have that stability for six to eight months while they get the job and can save money and et cetera, and continue to have a lot of accountability and support during that time as well. So, we continue to work with the Police Department and now, and now the Sheriff's Department, maybe I shouldn't word it that way, but it's been excellent to be able to, we always worked a lot with Fredericton Police Department, and now we're getting to work a lot with the Sheriff's Department, which has been really great as well, and we're actually adding, we're busy enough that we're adding a part-time kind of receptionist, somebody to answer the phone and be there when people walk in, we have so many people that are calling and walking in that we can't, we're often meeting with people or record or, you know, working directly with folks, and so, we're not so busy, we have to have somebody kind of field it on the front end, and to me, the most exciting part about that step is that we've been able to hire a graduate, so not only have we, you know, are we growing and serving more people, but we're actually the folks that have been for our program are doing well enough to get really good, stable, long-term jobs, so. Anyway, that's about all I had, I just wanted to give you guys a little quick update and really encourage you, please, please come and check out what we're doing, and if anybody has any questions, I'd have you to, you to...
Are you looking for more property at this time, or is that just as you grow?
I, I, we would like to do another, we really do need another men's house, we're just not quite, we, we need enough employees to be able to do it, it's not, the need is there, somebody being willing to be on call 24/7 for not that much money is not easy to find, so if you know anybody like that, right? So, you know, send them our way, we're going to send them our way, so, all right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Request to approve yearly maintenance contract on heating and cooling equipment at the police station. Oh, sorry. Spring cleanup, number four, request from Settle for spring cleanup date April 21st through April 26th.
This is the same we do every year, we just go and bump it up two weeks from the prior date because it don't really give us enough time to give the public warnings that it's coming.
Again, we need to reiterate about the curbside pickup.
Yeah, just, anybody who wants us to come and pick it up has to pay $10, come city like water, pay their $10 and get put on the list and then we'll...
What's that? What was the date again?
April 21st through April 26th.
I thought you said 24th, it's two days.
When's the Azalea Festival?
First weekend in May.
First full weekend of May. I think it's two weekends past, that's what I think. Don't want that trash out, don't have that time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now on number five, request to approve the yearly maintenance contract on heating and cooling equipment at the police station.
Did we get that issue taken care of at the police station with the heating?
We, we really ain't going to know until it gets colder hot.
I, so, I was reading this, I, I personally think this is, almost sounds like a little bit of a ripoff to me, as somebody that has had to have a lot of units cleaned and stuff, I'm curious if there's a local contractor that'd be interested in looking at this, I guess. I mean, if we're just talking about changing filters, that's something that you guys would be comfortable with as well, and, I mean, there really shouldn't be any need to pull apart the units and clean the coils inside of them if you're changing the filter on a regular basis. I don't know, it just seems, seems like a lot to hose out a coil and change a filter every quarter, especially if it doesn't affect the warranty, what it says on here, it doesn't extend or do anything for the warranty, and if there's ever any service outside of that, you're still billed $110 an hour parts, so.
So they just take a garden hose and hose off the coils on the outside, is that what they do?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I don't, do they...
I, I think the only reason why you guys have that, it dropped off after they installed it.
Okay, that's what...
It just got gave to us.
Yeah.
Turn it in, but, yeah, I'm, I'm right, I'm tracking with you, I'm still more concerned on the other, the issue, we're going to have to come back and...
Exactly.
Change out stuff.
Yep.
Not heard anything from them either. But it hasn't been cold either since then, so.
For the cost of filters, you probably just need to set up a program where the first day of every month, somebody goes through and changes all the filters and we won't have to worry about it, you know it's done, and if we have any problems beyond that, then we could seek professional assistance, I would think, and still save money over that fee.
I think what you guys are reading is just, I think it would be, I think it's just something that they send out every time they install something, is to say, hey, we just put this in for you, here's this, take a look at it.
Let's get it working first.
Yeah, that's, that's the key, so.
Like an upsell thing is what it sounds like.
Yeah.
They, if you read my report, Ed.
No, I didn't.
They did come, Dan with Brockmiller and some of his guys come down and put quite a bit of insulation in the roof, didn't they?
Oh, yeah.
So they found something up there that wasn't insulated, and hopefully that was the problem, the pipes wasn't insulated and stuff, and just by luck it didn't freeze up. Not until it gets hotter, gets cold, I don't know if it's keeping up or not.
What about thermostat in the meeting room, did they get, they did replace that or whatever?
That's all I can, we got like one after they came, we talked about, they came and pumped like six big batts of insulation up into the, I remember, that table up in there, and that had to do a lot, so, we had one more kind of colder day after they put that up there, and I noticed that the thermostats were like, if you set it at 68, it stayed at 68.
Well, that's a good improvement then, so.
Which was not doing that before, so, I'm confident, you know, I got faith that it's going to work, but don't have, don't have a, don't have an answer for you at the lockdown.
Well, I'd suggest we table this for now.
Second.
Motion to table by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Brown. All in favor? Any opposed? Discussion regarding Emergency Management Director.
The last meeting, did I discuss this? Then we need to know if we need to write a letter or not?
Right, what kind of letter?
If we were going to...
Yes, right, if you want, if you want to continue with the contract law with the county, we'll automatically remove if you don't tell them you want out by before April 1.
So let's just, if the tornadoes were to hit us last week, would we have needed one? Absolutely, I think we absolutely would have, that's just my opinion.
I think the question was whether do you want your own or do you want to share with the county? You have to have one, because statutes require you to have one. So do you want your own or do you want to share with the county?
I think the conversation's been that there's been some things over the past years where we feel like the city needed better representation, so I think if we want to continue with the county, I think that we have a, we have a conversation with the county and the director that should something arise, we, we would expect better and more communication, otherwise we'll look to do our own, would be a suggestion.
But that contract we entered into with them is a year long, right?
Yeah, so you need to, you, you don't have another meeting before April 1, so.
Chief Clark.
Yes, sir.
What's your opinion on that?
I can say the last six months has been pretty good with the Emergency Management Director. Tim and I have talked a lot on the phone, you know, emergencies in the town usually involves us before anybody. And Kevin and I both have been on, I've been pretty bluntly, that we needed to do things done, I think I've seen a turn to the better, communication-wise, I have zero issues communicating now, so.
As long as there's been significant improvement, because I was of a mind to have our own there for a while.
Yeah, I'd say thank you.
And I totally agree with that, what you just said, but I think it has turned in that direction.
Number seven, request from Settle to purchase paint for streets from Sherwin-Williams to the amount of $3,431.72.
This is just the paint we use to paint across walls and park lines with.
So moved.
Second. Motion to approve by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Request from Lawson to discuss dusk to dawn lights and meters and service line charges.
The, on our electric meters, the last time we purchased them was when we did our AMI system and that, and they cost $198 apiece. We charged $200 when the customer, new customer has it built and everything. We're getting low, and so sometime we're going to have to order more meters, and these meters come out of Mexico, so you, you got to figure they're going to be costing more and that, so I'm just kind of looking forward ahead that if we do have to get more meters and we do have the customer charge on those meters, I recommend to 240. I don't know if you've got the paper that I printed up and that, that was, that's one of my kind of suggestions. Also, on the rental lights we have, we used to use high-pressure sodium, which was cheaper using, but now everybody sells LED lights, there's no more high-pressure sodium lights, and the cost of them are much more significant, and it's just kind of looking at adjusting the rental, the rental rates that we have, the, right now on the, just a regular DD light you put in the backyard, the dusted on, they cost $120 apiece, and we're charging $9.50 a month on those, and just is, we used to buy them for 47, 50 bucks apiece, you know, on those, kind of $10 a month and that, and I'm not saying we, if we do accept this, that we change everybody's bill, because there's still people that have high-pressure sodium. It'd be one of those where we go and change it, we tell the girls, hey, they have an LED light now, that we need to adjust their price that their rental is and that, so everybody wouldn't be paying a new rate until we tell the girls what, what they have and that, so it wouldn't be something retroactive that everybody's rate would be changed. Same way on the Cobra heads and the floodlights we have, that we're there, you can see what the prices are on those, we rarely put up Cobra heads for rental lights and add more of the floodlights and that, and you can see that some of the floodlights range from $373 to $500, so, you know, it takes, it takes a long, it takes a long time that you're recouping our cost that we're putting the lights up and that. Anybody have any questions on, on those particular ones? Okay, then the other is on the meters for the commercial and industrial, right now we only charge what it costs the city for what the meter costs, and you see there, they range from 247 up to $500. My thinking is, is that if we, if we charge just what the city costs and then I replace it, well, that meter's going to be more than what we're, we're not, we're not really recovering our cost when we use them and that, and just kind of suggesting we may do the city cost plus 15% on the meters for industrial and commercial and that. Same way on material we use, since I've been here, it's always been whatever it costs the city. You know, I never have agreed with it, but that's what I was told by Barb when she was here, she said, well, it's not fair to charge them more and that, but when it comes time for, like I say, replacing our stuff, it's costing us more to replace it than what we're charging the customer for and everything, and I'm suggesting we do a cost plus 20% on the underground wire conduit, the CTs, PTs, and meter bases, those are for the three-phase services that we hook up and that. Then, now we come into, when we set transformers for our commercial and industrial customers, we're getting, you know, how much they're, how high they're getting now on transformers, and we're, we're really never going to recoup our cost back on those, probably for at least 20, 25 years and that, so I'm kind of suggesting that, like the metals, they're going to be doing their phase two. I figured up phase one, it cost us putting in transformers and the primary wire conduit, that what the city pays for, not what they pay for, they pay for the secondary wire from the transformer to the, to the meter bases, and it cost us a little over $150,000 just for that phase one, and I don't know how long it's going to take us to recoup that cost and that, so, it's, it's just something I'm saying we need to look into, that we can't keep on charging just city, city cost, I, in my opinion, anymore, because we've got to be losing money. I, I mean, I can't prove it, but there's no way that, I know what I see when I, when I order new material, what, how much the prices go up, because I keep track of all that on our inventory, and so I know how much it costs when we last bought it and then when we buy it now, because it, the rates change and that, so, I'm just kind of suggesting that we look into, that we need to change what's in the city ordinances about what we charge our customers and that.
Jeff, didn't you say that's what you was doing when you was up in Farmington?
Farmington, we charge 20%. Jackson, they, they don't like, well, apartments or metals, that's all up to the contractor, they install it all, they buy the, they buy the transformers, they buy everything, they install it, city takes it over, just like doing water and sewer lines. Customer pays for all that stuff, then the city takes it over. I'm not suggesting we go that far, because it'd be kind of hard controlling what somebody's going to be buying, and then we take it over, and then we may have a headache and everything. Just have, this way we have a little bit more control of what's going in, that we know we're, we're buying, we're, we're putting in the best that, that we're going to serve our customer and that. Right now, we're finding over, on Spruce Street, what they call that, the...
St. Michael's Village.
What is it?
St. Michael's Village.
No, not seniors, across the street from the senior center, the...
Old Terrance.
No, it's Old Terrance.
St. Michael's Village.
Okay, that's it, yeah. That was put in years ago by a contractor, the city took it over. Now we're running into where the, the wire wasn't put in conduit, and we've been over there twice in the last two months, that the underground's burned up because they backfilled with bricks and everything, and now the ground is finally cutting the wire, and, I mean, it's, it's a mess over there, every time we, the, the two times we've gone in there and had to change, fix the wire, well, we just put in new wire and put in conduit, so we don't have to go in and get, so that's kind of, if you leave it up to somebody else, they're going to cut corners, so that's the reason why it's better for us that we know well, what's in there and it's done right. So, I mean, it's just going into the ordinances and, and just kind of tweaking stuff and that, so, just kind of asking, do you want to keep it the same, or do we look at it changing some things?
My thought, anytime you start selling something for the exact price you buy it for, there's things not taking into account, and one is the length... for, there's things you're not taking into account. The one is the labor you pay somebody to shop for it to get it. Do these prices also include the shipping to get it here?
Yes.
Right? So there's, there's factors in here that you're, you're not capturing. You're gonna, you're not capturing the true cost when you sell it. If we bought it for fifteen hundred and we sell it for fifteen hundred, we absolutely lost money because there was hour, there was man-hours in the purchasing, and then if you're not including the shipping in that cost, then you're losing out your shipping as well. And in the end, if we don't capture that cost and we are losing money, now you're looking at having to make up for it rates because you can't, you can't run negative right. So to me, it makes sense to go cost plus.
Uh, and nobody's giving this stuff away anymore. Like even Black River used to get so many spans for free. You have to, you don't get any spans for free with, with their systems now at residential and stuff. So everybody's trying to make it work. It just makes sense to me to-
And the cost of the transformer, we, I, I don't ever see us doing it on residential because usually now, I mean, if you go some places down the street, you'll, you can see a transformer on every pole. It may feed one house. Well, now, we put up one transformer to try to feed more than one house to, and it, that cuts down on our, uh, the, uh, power factor, the loss on our lines and everything, cutting, cutting the, the transformer, uh, down. But it, it'd be, it would be hard trying to pass that cost on to a new construction of a house or anything because there's somebody else that may be on that same transformer that's lived there for years, and you couldn't say, well, you, you owe a third of this or whatever. It's, it's mainly where it's gonna be commercial because it's just, that transformer's dedicated for them. Uh, one of our industries on the east side of town, they was looking to expand, and so I told them, I said, well, I need to know what your service is to find out first if we've got a transformer. If not, then I've gotta bid it out, and we didn't have one specific, the size that they was gonna need for their service. And that transformer was gonna be thirty-five thousand dollars. They, depends on how much load they're gonna have on that. It may not be very much, so they're not gonna be, they don't have a heavy load, then they're not gonna be buying that much electricity from us. So it may be fifty years before we would ever recoup our cost out of that transformer. So that's the reason why I thought if we would just get half of it, at least the city's not losing a lot. And you, and you don't wanna, you don't wanna go too far. It used to be the city charged the full amount to, uh, customers, the industry and, and commercial, and this is when Doug was here, and he asked me one day what I thought. I said, well, to me, you're, you're passing this on and nobody wants to build here because why, when they can go to Farmington, I told him, I said, they get it for free. Well, it wasn't just about six months ago, Greg Beavers called me and asked me how we charge, because now they're building all underground in these new subdivisions, and he's figured out how much it's costing the city when they build a new subdivision that they're not recouping their cost for about twenty-five years because they build one house and they wait till it's sold, they build another house, wait till it's sold, but they've had to go in and put in all the, uh, electrical in because they don't know where they're gonna build at. They can't just say, you know, start here, build a house, and then we'll build on with you. They have all these lots, so they want them already to have electricity on them. So they've done all that work and so he, I don't know, I don't know for sure if they've gone to where they're passing it the full amount, uh, to the contractors or not, but it kinda got me thinking, you know, after I went back and read what we've had and everything, that, I mean, well, like I said, it's always been whatever it costs the city, then that's what I've earned, what I've charged and everything. So, and that. We're, we just changed out a pole here on West Main this morning that got hit by an auto, uh, a week ago, Saturday, and that, and that cost the city seventeen hundred dollars for us to change it out and that. That was with the material, our labor and everything. So, you know, hopefully they had insurance. If they don't have insurance, then, I mean, it's gonna be hard for us to recoup our, our money. But if, if we was charging cost plus, then we would be getting more, at least covering the material, which we're, I mean, we're charging them for what the labor was already, so we're not losing money on that. But like I said, on the material, when we get to replacing it, uh, we could be losing money. So something, something to think about, and we'll just, you know, let me know because we'll have to, I'll have to talk to them with Mary, and we'll have to change some things in the ordinances and that.
I mean, it makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. I mean, if you guys are okay, I'd just go ahead and make a motion to approve that request this evening.
Before we do that, is, is there surrounding towns, but my only concern is the, the transformers. Is this gonna create a, an additional burden to any new business wanting to come in? Is that gonna impact?
Well, we're only, if we do this, we're only gonna be charging half what it costs a transformer. Farmington is charging one hundred percent. Jackson, you have to, you have to order it. You're, the contracts are gonna have to order it, and they're gonna have to get the transformer and everything.
About towns more or size, Park Hills, Deloos?
Well, Park Hills, Deloos, and then they're covering Ameren. So I don't know how Ameren is, you know, I mean, they're kinda like what used to be with Black River. They used to charge so much for, I think it was five hundred feet. I don't think they do that anymore. I think it's all the cost of what it, for them to, and then they kinda, they kinda pro-adjust it after so many years, uh, that you pay for it and that. So, I mean, if the only one is the size of us is, uh, you're, you're looking at probably, uh, Kennett, New Madrid, who own their own utility company, uh, the electric and everything. Uh, that would be, I mean, I could, I could, uh, call up at the MPAA office and talk to them and see if they can tell us who, who does what on, on their services and that. You know, I mean, if we're kinda, if we're in the norm, that we're, what we're doing now, or has everybody else passed, passes it along to the customer, uh, to, to cover their costs and that.
That'd be, that, my, my only concern. I, I think everything else is, you know, it's nickels and dimes, and I think it's okay, but when you're talking potentially ten, fifteen thousand dollars upfront to open a new business, um, that's just my only concern.
Yeah. I mean, uh, the, uh, the Sea Balls is, is getting ready to build their new building, which they've already paid their fees upfront already, what, what we charge and that. So they, they wouldn't be affected with this. But the transformer that's going out there, we already have in the stock, is, we bought it, uh, about six years ago, and it's, it was, uh, about six thousand. Now, when we, I have to replace it, uh, it's, you're probably gonna be talking about fifteen to twenty thousand, right near to replace that transformer. And that to have it, well, because we'll have to replace it because I'll have to have a backup if something happens to that one, so like we can change it out. We can't, we can't, uh, you know, uh, knock harder because it takes, at the minimum, it's gonna take ten weeks to get one and that.
So then what we might want to make sure verbiage says is replacement cost to transformer rather than the actual cost. Because we've got one that's six years old, and we gotta replace it, and we're spending four times as much, then we're still not doing ourselves any favors. Because if we're gonna install it and then buy another one right behind it, we're still, we're still not capturing that cost, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and on something like that, uh, if we did it that way, it would be with Jeff, because Jeff gives me the building permits now, and then most of the time, the, the contractor usually calls me and said, hey, Jeff, what, what are my costs gonna be? And I ask him what the size service they're gonna have, so I know what size transformer, what the metering is, and then, then I figure that up, and then I, uh, tell him, and then I give it to the girls in the light and water office and tell them, okay, this is what, this is what they owe us and that, when they, when they're gonna have the, their bill. Uh, on something like that, I'll have to do, do bids, what's gonna be, replace it before I could, if we're gonna pass it along to them, what the actual cost is to replace it and everything. So it may just take a little bit longer before I can give them an answer of what their, uh, bill's gonna be on their, hooking up their metering and that.
So do we wanna pass everything but the transformer, or?
What has been done to ordinance, correct, Mary?
It, it does.
So we can-
All you're gonna do is give us directions to get, get a draft to bring to you. Uh, you'll give us an idea of what, do you want Jeff to do some more research? Do you want us to draft, be a draft based on his notes? That's, I think, what we're looking for tonight.
Yeah, because everything in here is all in ordinance, is, is, and that, so whatever, it, it won't be, it won't go into effect tonight. It, it'd be probably a couple meetings before you, it's having an ordinance form to vote it and everything.
I'm with Nate, and I'm, it's pretty much nickel and dime everywhere, but the transformers. So if we could do some research on that.
I can, like I said, I can call up there and, and ask them if they can have, you know, do a survey for us of what everybody else does on their costs and that.
But I mean, in reality, if you're gonna come in here and build a business, is a ten thousand dollar gonna change your mind?
No.
I mean-
Not commercial building.
Right.
That's a, I mean, with the cost of building materials, ten grand's a drop in the bucket.
Well, most of them, when they, when they're talking to me, what they find out, what we do, and, and that, they're really surprised of what, of what they're not having to pay for. And I mean, we're, we're bringing the line, the primary line into the transformer, setting the transformer, setting the pad and everything for them, and all they gotta do is bring the secondary from the transformer into the building. So the electrician, and he's, he's loving it because he, he's only gotta make his bid on, from the transformer end. He don't have to worry about all that other stuff, so.
Are you writing a marketing package with these words, James?
Yeah.
This is selling Frederick Town all day long.
We ain't pleased.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's what I said when I, when I was talking to Doug, I was thinking, you know, because, because he was saying, Jeff, it, we can't get nobody come in. And I said, well, you know, somebody's gotta pay for this, and they're paying for this, and they're paying for this. I wouldn't come here. I said, I'd go eighteen miles up the road, and that's where I'm going because they get it for free, you know? So that's kinda how we went that direction. But now, since everything has changed and the cost of, is going sky-high on everybody, now everybody can't give it away free because they're losing money, so.
Those transformers are high.
So where we stand?
So what do you want?
So are we, so that's, that's what I was thinking about, a motion suggestion. So are we suggesting to move forward with this and have Jeff get some information on transformer costs, um, before we draft up an ordinance for us to review on a future meeting?
Second.
Do you get that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, so motion, uh, by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is Ann back here. They just left it off.
Okay.
It's our uniforms.
All right, uh, somebody you go through these, pass them around thing? Okay. Are these copies, or is this just one document?
That's the original.
Okay. All right, so, um, request for approval of bid for janitorial services for police building. Teresa just handed me some stuff here to go over. If you just said what, there's some differences?
Well, it's just, um, it's not on the bid form, and that we've got to have, I have not opened them until today.
Okay.
I took care of all this.
James took care of it since we're involved.
Okay.
I figured there'd be questions to fill yours out.
That's that one.
The one in the envelope was the highest. I mean, the yellow one was the highest.
Was the highest bid?
Are these bids or?
One looks like it was, uh, ours was a part of my, and part of you.
I think the way I've got them all rolled down there is they're all by the month.
What's your recommendation, James?
Well, two of them are the same, and I really got no recommendation. They're both from here. Mary, she told me the same thing, said, well, it's just one part from the other, and there really isn't. The, uh, what I can say is Teresa's been doing it.
So we know her work. Do you want the job?
It's Ashley and I together, so much we're good.
We're looking at apples to apples?
Yeah. Yeah. Both peoples from here. We know them. Good people. Teresa paid me, say, say that.
You've got some-
Somewhat trustworthy.
So the regularity's the same with, like this is hold, or the office is once a week? Services two times a week?
Jennifer, are you doing this yourself, or do you have someone hired? Just you?
I don't have any employees in here.
Okay. No, I'm not looking for a job.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Kevin's thorough.
That's about right.
Put two ends on there.
She had a speech impediment.
She had a speech impediment.
It's not a one mistake per week.
Oh, I bet I can find more.
You can take Bill's spot.
Huh?
You can take Bill's spot.
Yeah, I don't think that'll work.
Oh.
Don't get her up here by me again.
Thoughts? Thoughts or motion?
Whatever. Anybody have any questions? Do you have any questions, Nathan?
No.
So I will make a motion based on the fact that James said that the bid proposals are apples to apples. Everything is across the board the same. And I will move that we accept Teresa and Ashley's bid based on the fact that they've done work for us and we know their process and know that they can do the job.
Second.
Motion to accept the bid from Teresa and Ashley, second by Alderman Polley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, number 10, discussion regarding setting a deposit fee for tournaments held at sports complex. Is this you?
BKC property.
Oh, did I miss one again?
Did I jump one?
You jumped one.
You jumped one. I'm, I didn't do it this time.
No, we don't have a 10.
Wrong list.
I, I talked to James, we, we had a situation where a tournament was held at the sports complex. It was too muddy to play ball and they played anyway. And they tore the fields up pretty good, baseball field and the upper softball field. Apparently they were from out of town, had beer cans in the dugouts, trash, you know, scattered. Um, I know Farmington's got theirs shut down currently for renovation. So there's probably going to be some other tournaments down here from out of town people that may not respect our complex. And I just thought it might be a good idea to consider, um, requiring a deposit for weekend tournaments. I'm not talking about leagues or anything necessarily, but weekend tournaments out there. Making sure they stay on the fields they're supposed to be on. And if it's too muddy to play, they don't play. And if, if they do and, and trash it up or tear it up, they don't get their deposit back. That's just, that was just a thought that crossed my mind to try to prevent this from happening again.
Who makes that call?
If they get their deposit back or not?
If the field's too muddy or if it's tore up or, who decides that?
I think that's Brad's call right now.
Who called you on this one Saturday?
Um, Larry Kemp called me.
Okay. Because I went out there.
I did too.
And the fields are not tore up. They were nothing that couldn't be fixed. He was upset and, I mean, I told him. I said, have your attorney for the county draw it up. I said, you're going to have this place back. I mean, if we're going to put guys out there to take care of it and pay them, then why is he coming out there deciding what the city's going to do?
Now, with him, with his opinion aside, I did, I was disappointed with the, with the way the field was, the shape the field was in. How long did it take to get it back in shape, James?
Coach Williams absolutely loved it out there Monday when I talked to him. He thought it was great.
After we'd worked on it?
Mm-hmm, after it was ready to play on.
So how long did it take us to fix it?
No, two, three hours.
That's all? It looked worse than that to me.
It looked worse that night.
That was that one out there the day after they left. I mean, there was, they ripped the bases up and moved them obviously to play softball on a baseball field. And there was mud everywhere and beer cans everywhere, so.
That's why I concerned me more than anything was moving the bases because they don't know where all the water lines are stuck or laying under that turf, so.
Yeah.
I get that, but I mean, if we're going to have this thing, I mean, we're going to have to let people use it. And if they pay their money to use it, then, I mean, if we want something beautiful out there to just look at, let's lock the gates and just keep it mowed and, you know.
Yeah.
Don't let anybody on it at all.
Do other complexes charge a fee, security deposit?
I think so.
You think so, yes?
Uh, most of them charge more than what we charge. We could charge a $200 deposit and we're still cheaper than the majority of the complexes. So these guys that go around to play the tournaments, they're going to let you have the $200.
I mean.
I, I mean, you're not going to.
If we can do that to protect ourselves, then why not do that? And I have no idea with Larry and, and, I mean.
Well, what's done, it's done, we're just looking to move forward.
Correct.
Well, I mean, you're going to have trash no matter what.
Protection for us if we don't, if other places do it, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. We need to be charging the deposit also.
And my question is, who makes that decision?
That they get the deposit back or not?
Yeah, whether the fields.
And I, we would go back to the parks director, right? I mean, that should.
That's what James said, it would be Brad's call right now.
I, I mean, he's the one that made the call to allow them to play on it and he's the one that went out there and fixed it Monday.
So they would have got their deposit back even if we hadn't deposited, correct?
I would say yes, I mean.
Okay. But I mean, it's just protection for us, if, if it's worse next time or, I mean, that's again, it's going to fall on them.
Probably won't happen next time because he kind of knows now, so. I think that's all mistake, we thought field one was too muddy, so they moved it up there, football field's what happened.
It was a learning curve, this thing hasn't been used and they're trying to use it and we can't make the county happy. Is what it boils down to.
Is that something new?
It's new to me.
Okay.
I tried to give it back to them.
Basically neither here nor there, I'm just throwing it out there. It was, it was a thought I had that might.
I think that's what I do.
If it's something we need and it's something the other places do, then why not jump on board? It gives us protection. If they do break something or something major, obviously 200 bucks is not going to fix something major that they break or whatever. But I mean, it's closer to paying for problems than what we did have.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're concerned about it, my main concern would be putting a lawnmower out there to let them use on the ball fields that you're putting fertilizer on. Rather than bringing seed from down here in the ditch out there because you're using the same mower over every piece of property we own in town. And then you're going out there and mowing right on top of grass that you've got people coming in and working on.
That really is a little bit of an issue.
Mm-hmm.
Then we need to fix it.
Yeah, we need to get a little bit of a budget time next year. Just put it out there for the fields. The guy that comes and does our, looks our fields over a couple of times a year, he tells us that all the time and he quit that, so.
Take one out of service and leave it out there, you just use it out there. I mean, I know probably you're short already, but fix the old Ford out there.
I got a 54 and it's 12 bills, so yeah. Take it three days.
He's got one for sale right there, there you go.
So this was just for discussion, I mean.
No, I, I think we, I, I'd make a motion to look into getting, I don't know, again, just comparing prices and seeing what a fair deposit would be to maybe spur people to be responsible out there.
Second. Motion to review, uh, putting a deposit on, doing some research, uh, for deposit to the ball, sports complex, sorry. Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Brown, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Alright, discussion regarding BKC Properties LLC for utility easement.
No very much discussion to it, so.
So, BKC is building new apartments and they're, they have to put in the water line and they, DNR is making them have a permit for it. But in order for them to get the permit, the city has to basically take over this, because it's a, it's more of a main than it is a national. It's only going to service the apartments there, but it's, it's going to be a main basically. So we agreed with Brad and you guys have to approve that, that if we ever have, we would take it over. But if we ever have to come back in and replace it or repair it, that we would replace or repair the water line. But then whoever owns the property is responsible for replacing the surface, so asphalt or concrete.
He put it right up the center of his concrete lot.
Yes.
That's where it's going, so.
It's going right through the parking lot.
Do we have that documented and writing and?
It's in the.
That's why it doesn't, do you need an ordinance right now? You'll prove it if you are okay with it, then it's in the next meeting for approval.
And it's to our coat?
I guess Tim, you looked at this as all, you have to look at the.
Timber main?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is it the only utility running through the parking lot?
No, the sewer and the water go through, are going to be in there, so. We actually just went out there as soon as he started this and we pulled all that old clay out and put, it's Brad and BBC get through there now, so.
Are they in the same trench or the separate ones? Separate or separate?
Yeah, there's utility easement one is one, utility easement two is the other, one sewer, one sewer. Any description?
So who owns who's in both of those things, correct?
Yes.
As you see on, on the plans, uh, his plan is to put like, what is it, six, eight?
More complexes in there.
It's like eight.
Yeah, there are eight, eight apartment buildings when it's all said and done, but I think he's just doing, you know, two at a time, so. He's going to run the mains all the way to the back of the property.
So what do we need?
It's going to be on the next agenda.
Okay.
The ordinance will be, that was just so you guys could discuss it and ask any questions you needed to do.
If there's no voting action needed, no?
It just kind of came up and we hadn't, none of you guys had known about it or talked about it yet, so before we just threw ordinance at you, we couldn't know what it was about.
Look at you guys thinking about us.
Occasionally, don't get used to it.
Yeah.
Alright, on to item number 12. Request to approve hose service test agreement for 2025, 2026, and 2027 from Firecat in the amount of $5,113.20.
And that's for?
And that's for three years, that fee?
Right, John?
Three. Yes, three years. That's the only way they do the contract, it's a three-year contract.
So it's three years for the total or is that 5,000, is that that amount each year?
That is each year.
It's $5,113 each year for that?
It looks like it goes up.
Yes, because they tried to raise it only during the last contract and my farm, because we had a contract. So I made the settlement, so that's why it's spelled out, it's three years.
This is who we always use?
Yes.
I'll move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Schenkel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Request for change order soft soil remediation from Herbst Excavating LLC for the fire station.
Did, Tim, you want to talk about this?
Sure.
Yeah, those on the spot, but you know all about it.
Alright, okay, so, you can't have to go back, we'll do the student and dirt work on this job last year. You'll remember there was, we rented some soft soils in the, in the, in the subdrain. So, uh, it's pretty expensive, we, we, we came up with some various options on how we would remediate that. Got some pricing from the contractor, various options, chose the one we decided to go with. We came up with a per yard, per cubic yard price for them to dig out the, about eight inches of soil in all of that areas and put some, some geopad down, rock backfill, packed it back in there and build it back up. So had they agreed upon price, said, let's go. So you all approved that, uh, they moved forward, they, they did all the work, it took them several months to get it all done. We were out there, you know, watching them do it, make sure they lift, that they lift right. So when they were finished, everything was good, uh, one council meeting we came to, they, they had submitted an invoice for it and it was more than what they agreed upon now was. So we said, wait a minute, we can't, like, hold on, let's see, let's take a look, let's see what's going on here. So we, so we paid them the amount they agreed upon and then the extra work that they said that they had done, the extra amount was to, to about $53,000, I think. We said, well, you know, we need some more justification, I'm like, tell us why, why you think you had more time? Here's the reasoning and the kind of background behind all that. So they provided some additional data, some additional information, we said, you know what, we don't, we don't agree with this, like, when you came across these, basically what it amounted to was there's, there's some utilities in those areas that they had to dig around. Took an extra time, extra care to dig around, so it was legitimate, but we just didn't agree with the amount that they were saying they had to, had to do, so. So we, again, we, so we, we kind of came up with a, I mean, ideally if they would have told us this when they first came across it, before they did the work, we could hash this out at that point in time, but they didn't do that. They went to, they were done with the project, citizen employees, and, and anyway, so here, here we are, so. So we took a look and we said, you know what, we, we can justify some of this, but not all of it. So, so we kind of came to a rational method of, of calculating the amount based on the time that we thought it did, they had extra involved in it. And we came with, with the amount of about $14,000 instead of the $53,000 that they were asking for. So we kind of went back and forth a little bit and they didn't agree with us, we didn't agree with them, back and forth. We said, you know what, I said, we're, this is all we can justify in, in our minds. When we visit this city council, they still have to make the decision, but, but we're, we're not going to go beyond our, our reasoning for this. So they finally agreed that they would accept that, um, but again, we said, well, the council just has to make the final call. So that's what we're here tonight to present to you all to determine, decide if you agree with that or not, or if you want to, want to agree to pay that amount or, or, uh, stick with the original amount that we had. Again, the, the reasoning is because they didn't hit some, they didn't hit any utilities, we had to take some extra care to dig around what was in there. Which did take extra time, so we felt like it's a reasonable amount.
So.
Is this?
You will go?
Is this not the area that we wrote them the check rather than go through Brock Miller so they didn't put their 10% or whatever it was on there? Didn't we pay Herbst straight through on this?
Well, yes, I believe so, uh, so.
I mean, wasn't it like?
Well, I'm not sure about that.
Didn't we pay them like 60 some thousand?
We paid, we paid them directly.
It is, okay.
For this area, correct?
I'm not sure what the area was, but I'll have it on the head chart. But we did, when they did all that digging, we paid that, we.
Yeah, we paid them because it didn't.
We paid all the digging separate, right?
We paid this separate because Brock Miller didn't have anything to do with it and they weren't going to put their 10% or whatever it was on it.
Whatever was originally bid in the Brock Miller bid, we paid Brock Miller for. But the additional, when they spent all that extra soil, we paid Herbst directly so that we didn't pay the extra 10%.
Right, that's what I was thinking, but now they're wanting more.
We're not paying this twice, are we?
No.
Well, no, that was like 60 some thousand, that was what they bid it.
This is my question, was it a hard bid job? So the bid that came in, was there anything in there that said, was there any writers in there that said that should we come into a situation, there's more hours than there's, you know what I'm saying? Because in contract world, if you do extra work and you don't get approval before you do it, you own it. And that's.
That's what the Missouri constitution says too, with the laws of municipalities, that if they haven't got approval for the city to pay for it before they do the work, the city does not pay for it.
So, I mean, if, if they did it without us being involved in the approval, I'm sorry, but my opinion, I've, you guys have to vote, but my opinion is, is as a contractor, you always get approval for anything.
Well, I mean, they sent us a bill for it and we paid it.
Well.
We argued about that bill initially.
So they, they sent us a bill that included the extra map. And we said, we're not going to pay that full bill, but we'll, we'll pay what we agreed to.
But I mean, we paid, we paid Herbst directly for that.
Right, yes.
That rotten dirt.
What we agreed to, yes.
Yes, well, what we agreed to, but we didn't pay that.
Then this was additional on top of that.
Yeah, because we did not approve the additional, because the extra was a line item on there.
That's their fault. I know a hydro vac company that can come down and suck around them lines, it's pretty simple. I see it done daily, I mean.
Well, that's kind of my question too, even at $500 an hour for a piece of heavy equipment and an operator, that's 28 hours of work.
Right, yeah, and, and we, and you're, and you're right, you're on track, like, we've created. Right, yeah, and, and we, and you're, and you're right, you're on track, and like, we paid it, it took another, another two and a half to three days, and they, you want multiple pieces of equipment, they had dump, they had dump truck drivers, they got exterior, they got excavator and, and a couple.
I mean, I can understand if this was a, a site that had utilities running four different directions across it, but that wasn't the case, was it? I mean, what?
Well, in the front of the lot, on the College Street side, there was, there was quite a bit, there was three or four different lines, cause some were on the pedal of the street, some running up into the property, so there was some stuff they had along.
But that wasn't the bad dirt.
Well, there was some.
Alley side.
Is this where they hit our, is this where they hit our electric line though, and severed our electric?
That was their fault, wasn't it?
Did that?
Hit the electric line?
Yeah, they hit our.
Yeah, that was their fault up on College.
So I wonder if that was where they were digging for this extra.
Well, that's, that's the whole thing, like, like, yeah, they just said something when it was going on.
Yeah.
We gotta monitor that a little bit and understood, had a better understanding of what.
Yeah, I guess we didn't know though, cause it was.
Next time they made it add, but, no, I, I, I get what you guys are saying, and you're right, it wasn't, the agreed upon amount was just a your, per yard price.
And I mean, that's.
And then we would measure the yard.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the risk of dirt work in, in and of itself too, right, so unless you put some kind of clause in there of, you know, if we run into a situat, you know what I'm saying, like.
Well.
It's, but again, I, I go back to, you don't do extra work outside your scope without approval.
That's the whole thing, like, again, if they, if you, the first utility that, that they would've come across and said, well, wait a minute, this is gonna take us extra time, then we could've had that discussion then, and then either said, yes, we agree, or no, we don't, and then moved forward, but. It's a little harder to go back after the fact and kinda figure all this out, so.
Next, next question, Mary, are we protected?
Like I said earlier, if, if, I mean, what the mayor said, if the contract says, if this is the price we're paying, and we pay that price, we're good. Because the, the Missouri constitution does not allow us to go back and pay more for something that we agreed. We, we agreed to pay X and we paid X, we can't now pay Y for the prison.
But if they're talking about lines, I don't remember seeing lines back there by the alley in that.
No, the only, the only.
There are utilities on the front of the lot, so.
Yeah, it was on the front, so that should've been part of the regular bid anyway.
Well, when they said, they asked over dig areas up in the front too, where the, where the soil was bad, see, the, the, the original bid was just to take the adjusting grade and grade it down to, you know, dig down the dirt to get to where you can put your rock base and build things back up. We got down to that elevation and the dirt below that was not suitable, it was very plumpy and, and wet.
Then they cut the line, right?
So we had to overdig that out and put rock back in, and, and that area was some in the back and some in the front, it was kind of all over the place, so where we hid, we just, we had to dig it out, so, so the quality that we hid was, was pretty much on cue with what we, was what we thought when we got into the bad dirt, but it was the, it was the extra time that they felt they added in this digging on those utilities.
See how much more the concrete breaks after a year or two. See how good their compaction was.
So bottom line, are we legally obligated to pay this?
Well, I haven't looked at any documents, so.
Yeah, I think there needs to be a little more information with it.
I think we.
I wanna answer that question without having looked at any documents, but the mayor's, you know, got a good point there, it depends on how it's written.
I think we need to, we need to review the contract, we need to review the scope, and then we need to review what they're claiming they did outside of scope and see officially how we're protected before we just write a, a check for any amount, whether it's this agreed or the full amount or whatever it was before.
So I think that, I think the change, it was done by change order, uh, for the extra, for, for the overdig work in some fashion, but I don't know, I, I thought it was done through Brockmiller's contract, but I, but you're right, we even paid them directly.
Yeah, we paid Herbst directly, so we didn't have to pay the markup from Brockmiller.
Yeah, so we need, I, if, if that's the case, we might need to go back and look and see what, other than, I know they gave us a proposal for that, we might need to go back and look at that document, see how that.
Cause I think it was, wasn't it like sixty thousand or something?
Hundred and three.
Yeah, hundred and three thousand.
Oh, it was a hundred and three?
Yeah.
How's it cheaper putting in that sewer line of the police department than all this dirt? To break rock and.
There was rock out there, wasn't soupy?
Yeah, I, I guess, I, I don't think, I thought soupy'd be cheaper than rock, but I guess.
So can, I would like to probably make a motion to table this for further review and have Mary peruse the contract and dig, dig some, James digging and some other stuff, I guess, here. Makes sense?
Well, I'll publicly second it.
See what? I stuttered?
Motion to table pending further review of contracts and scopes and change orders by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Schenkel publicly, all in favor? Any opposed?
One minute. Three, but publicly.
Publicly limited.
Well, Paul made a publicly motion.
Did I publicly make a motion?
Yes.
Discussion regarding special use permit requirements. Does Mary or Jeff?
I think what this is really talking about is, is the change to the home-based business, there was state change in the law in, in your packets is the, a draft of, uh, ordinance that I prepared to, um, attempt to, uh, bring the city in compliance with some new statutes that, um, the, uh, general assembly passed. This, of course, has to go to P and Z for their review and, and come back to you before it can be passed, but, uh, I think the idea was that you guys needed to know what was going on before it went to P and Z, and this is just, again, my stab at, at bringing the, uh, ordinances in compliance with the new statutes. You can see, um, home-based businesses, um, have to be allowed, and, but under certain parameters, uh, the city can still, um, have some, some regulations, some, uh, in order to, uh, promote health and wellbeing, but you can't, uh, require them to have a special, you can't, uh, you can't require them to have a business license. So, um, if you had a chance to look at this, do you have any questions or anything specific, I can address, or try to address that.
So you want a business license for some of these?
Not, not to have, make me get a business license, as long as it's a no-impact home-based business, and so, uh, we, we have to define what is a no-impact home-based business, so it, um.
Oh, okay.
You can have certain things like it, it, um, does not increase activities in this, in the neighborhood, it does, actually, you can have where you can't, it's not visible from the streets, you know, so. What, what makes it no impact, um, that's where I put in there. That it's got to be lawful goods, that they're, the services it's being sold, uh, doesn't increase the, substantially the traffic in, in a residential neighborhood, doesn't produce noise like, uh, odor, smoke, gas, or vibrations that seem outside of the, uh, that, that lot. And I guess the, you know, I thought it would be important that if, like, someone's, um, making wedding cakes or something like that, or, or something that you would need to have a health inspection, well, we, we need to know about that.
Yeah, still, yeah, yeah.
I would suggest that, uh, when someone comes in and they're, they're wanting to have a home-based business, that they have to sign an affidavit, sign it under oath, under penalty of perjury, that it does comply with these things. It's not like we can go in there and enforce an inspection of their, their business, so I'm trying to be in compliance with the, the statute to protect, protect the community. Yeah, this is my stab at it.
So like, for example, we had, um, a salon here recently with a special use permit.
Okay.
That would probably be something that would be under that.
But we still have to have health department and all that, uh, there's some state requirements on beauty licensing and stuff, so, yeah.
So that one would be like a, would be a no-impact type of?
It would be, as long as they don't have enough people that they're clogging the streets, you know, things like that, yeah.
Ten resting, it's not including more than twenty-five percent of the floor space?
Right, right, you, you can, it still has to be a residency, you can't convert it in, you know, just, oh, okay, this is a home-based business, well, it still has to be a home, that's the key, it still has to be a home.
But these, like, the situation, this doesn't change anything, like, for example, when the shelter insurance located to a, they, they bought a house and they converted the house into an office.
Okay, well, that's, they're taking the hundred percent of the floor space.
Yeah, so that still requires.
That's not a home-based business.
Yeah, and that would still require a, a special use permit at that point, then, okay.
Right, right, that's different, that's not a no-impact.
Perfect, no, I, I read it.
That's where that twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Of the floor space only can be used in the business, the rest has to be, still, a residence.
It's just a discussion, so nothing, it's, you said it's in the meeting to follow, so.
And I guess, you know, if there was something that you wanted to say, well, I know I want this, you may as well split it out so that P and Z knows it, before, it has to go to P and Z first, before you can go.
Yeah, this one just goes to P and Z, just so you guys know what's going on.
Okay. Number fifteen, discussion regarding purchase on solve code red emergency notifications, the amount of seventy-two hundred and seventy dollars for three years.
Yep, yeah, I'll start this, I got Kyle and John here both on this, we, this came up, uh, probably four years ago now, maybe. They told us, Brown was actually the one that brought this to council originally, and, um, I guess we talked about it, we weren't extremely motivated at that point, but we've had numerous large-scale disasters and emergencies, um, in the last few years, and communication has always been kind of something that, after we've had our post-incident debrief, you know, communication with the community has always been a, kind of a troubled spot there, so, uh, this, this is a solution for that, um, it's a pretty widely-used program, Farmington and St. Francis County use it. It's, uh, I think the biggest thing is we don't have to rely completely on social media to pass messaging to citizens, this is something that we can send out text messages, it'll go to an app, it can even call landlines for those that don't have internet or cell phones.
Also post on social media also?
Yeah, it'll take, it'll take care of some posting on social media too, so, um.
So it's like a click and mass send, right? It'll send to all?
Yeah, and there's, and there's separate groups you can set up as well, so, you know, we, uh, this is something that we've talked about with some of the business owners as well, like, getting information to them about, you know, power outages and, you know, like, for the fire at CMR, for example, like, being able to communicate directly with some of the management at some of the large employers and just saying, hey, look, this, what's going on, you know? You, you're, you're in the clear right now, obviously, they're not getting an evacuation order or anything, but just having an extra line of communication with those businesses as well, just to keep, keep them in tabs, since they've got a lot of employees and everything there, so. Um, that, that, you have different groups you can communicate with, other than just sending out mass notices to the whole public, so. And then that was, so that's, I don't know, it, it's, it's a neat program, it's, it's geo-located to you, so you can draw on a map on the thing and send it just to that, you're not having to send it, like Nixle, which the county currently uses, it's just a.
It's a free version.
Yeah, and you, it's, it sends it to everybody, you can't, and you can't segment it to just, yeah, so this allows you to segment it to who you wanna send, you don't gotta send it to everybody, you can send it to just one neighborhood or one group of businesses or whatever, so.
This would be implemented where? Would this be countywide?
This, the, what, what I sent was the quote that Kyle, uh, uh, acquired, and is, uh, this would be a county-wide, um, county-wide deal, thirteen thousand people.
Yeah, it was thirteen, fourteen?
Yeah, some, some, yeah, thirteen, yeah, I think thirteen is what this says, but it would include everybody in the county, um.
So we're paying half of it?
That, well, that was what, I, you know, I don't know how to really start that, I, I spoke to a couple commissioners about it, and also Dean Stevens, uh, emergency manager about it, and they think there's room in his budget potentially to split the cost with us on it, so.
So I did bring it up in the, uh, commissioner's meeting this morning, Tom and Larry both said they were good with it, pending, finding money to pay for it.
Yeah.
Whatever that means, so, that's where we set with the county.
Yeah, so I don't know what, that's the thing, I don't know how they wanna, I don't know how we've done that before, if we ever split something with a, with a county, how we, you know, rent the contract.
We've been using Nixle for ten plus years, and, uh, we've gotten away with a free version, and we've came into a bunch of limitations with Nixle. I've gotten, what, who else did I talk to, Motorola Rave, I think, was one that I talked to, and it was four times the price of Code Red, uh, or three times the price.
Yeah, this, this, this price being here is actually pretty much exactly what it was four, five years ago, whenever we looked at this the first time, it's not really increased.
We wouldn't make that decision about what messaging goes out when.
I've been doing it for ten years, so, I guess, and Ashley told, me and Ashley are in constant conversation, me and James are in constant conver, you know, when, last Friday, when we had the storms, uh, we were alternating between Ashley and James, getting all these electric outages and, uh, fires and everything else going on, uh, so, I mean, nine-one's been taking care of it for ten plus years, so I'm, I'm assuming we would continue to take care of it.
Well, I, I think too, I've, talking to John, you know, that, thus, we want multiple logins because we wanna be able to have access to do it as well, and I think that goes for any city, I'm not taking it away from, but I think we all need to have an equal share of being able to log in and send out what messaging that needs to be sent out, you know?
It'd be a jo, a joint effort, like nine-one-one, you're gonna have nine-one-one, your emergency management for the county, or in the city, you, you and John, us, whoever, you know, whatever needs to go out, we'll all work together and get the information out.
But that's, you can't have multiple logins, is what, what I understood the, the thing, so, that's kind of what's nice about it too.
We have the venues we want, so if we're on fire scene like CMR and we need to put that evacuation, we could've just, Kevin could've got his laptop out, drew a picture around that evacuation zone. This area needs to evacuate, which the button been done. And then anybody that comes into that zone.
Get me out.
Will get that message, anybody that's already in that zone will get that message, but then if you leave and come back, you'll get the message. Or if you wasn't there when they sent it out the first time and you come into that zone, you'll automatically get that message. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's neat, uh, there's, there's a video that they, that they, uh, put the link with, uh, on the city page.
And the one, and that's the thing too, there is another demo that's available that Kyle sent me, and, uh, it's, it's more in-depth, it goes to actual more through the program, but there is no good way to really share that without, I don't know how to really share it, cause you have to log in, so.
You have to download an app for it, or is it just?
You can, yeah, you can.
Or you can sign up, just like you do with Nixle, and basically, it'll be a group, it'll be a group effort of everybody sending out that originating, you know, to sign up for this or download the app, uh.
I think. Getting, getting that word out, so.
Older people, they, they have a.
It's totally free, it's twenty-three hundred and forty dollars a year.
A voicemail at their house.
For those three years, and it's two hundred and fifty dollars.
Somebody would have to help them set that up, where that voice call would come in through their phone.
Didn't this, I was watching so many videos today, wasn't it? Didn't it say, send it out like six different, six different?
Yeah, you can send it multiple, all, all at once, like, that's even thing with weather warnings, like, and Kyle could have that pre-typed up too. You, I mean, if it's a tornado warning, it's gonna say this, he sends a button and it goes everywhere all at once, so.
With Nixle, when you sign in to Nixle, you have to, you have to get an email to get a code, to be able to sign in to Nixle, then you gotta go and copy your page. Your email, your report to pull down, and copy your page, and that's the message, and if you, can, you can't go over a hundred and forty. It's, it's a pain, and sometimes you're ten minutes into the tornado warning before you ever get the Nixle message sent out, especially if you're working by yourself, trying to get fire departments paged or your cat, you know, your cat events put in and sent to everybody, now you got a Nixle to worry about, so, and that Nixle is, is a pain in the ass.
And this does automatically send out, isn't there an integration too, where this will automatically take care of the weather?
It should automatically integrate with the National Weather Service.
Yeah, that's one less, that's why I understood it too, so, I mean, that's one less thing, you don't even have to mess with it anymore, it's just, it's gonna send it based on the.
We can use it for power outages and like boil water orders and stuff, so if we have a boil water order in a certain area, we can use it to notify people.
Draw that.
Through that, if the boil water order's been lifted, we can use it to notify for that.
That's the thing, cause you try to put that, that's the thing with social media, the one downfall, like, and we've been really successful on social media, getting every information out to everybody, but, you know, sometimes like boil water situation, like, people don't know what street they even live on sometimes, so there's all this confusion, and if you can just really simplify it that way, can avoid some of the.
Is the seventy-two hundred dollars total, or is that our half?
That's total.
That's total, so we'd be half.
So the, Ashley told me go down a little bit further, it shows year one, two, and three subscriptions, so we would be half of each of those amounts. And with it benefiting multiple departments, we probably. And with it benefiting multiple departments, we'd probably be able to pay for it without having to affect general fund?
I'll make a motion to approve this on the, on the basis that the county will approve their half.
Second.
Motion to approve with Paul's statement by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Schenkel, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, number sixteen, request of purchase of two thousand twenty-five Chevrolet Silverado twenty-five hundred HDWT from Sapaw Motors in the amount of fifty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars.
It's just the cheapest truck we found, this was something we budgeted, I was planning on waiting until the end of the budget year in case something else come up, but due to some new unforeseen things, there, you might as well put it in.
Unforeseen is?
Uh, we've got a truck that just shuts off going down the road, and we can't seem to chase it down, because, you know, it is, well, to fix it, it works fine, so. They say they go down the road, shuts off, they throw it neutral, crack it back up, take off again, so, it's got, it's got electrical things somewhere, but we're replacing, they're really, the truck we're replacing is a eighty-four model, so.
You said this was budgeted, correct?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Add number seventeen, request to approve emergency repair computer screen from the MIOX generator from Municipal Equipment Company in amount of four thousand dollars.
Guess their screen broke on the controller for the water plant out there, I guess.
Yeah, this is a, kind of a half-two, half.
Yeah, no, it absolutely is, at MIOX, it was keeping our water clean, so, I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Polite, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
With Jones, we left it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Publicly, for the record.
Publicly. Publicly, Eric Jones.
My mistake. All right, there is no closed session for the work session, do I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now he gets to through the work session.